Transition here to the other meeting and we'll get started. So it is six oh four PM. And I call this October eighteenth meeting.
Let's move to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Professor George.
Gayle Connor. Sandy Flora.
Present.
Mike Isley.
Here.
Spencer Keenley.
There.
Cody Nelson.
There.
And he'll indicate you to the seat. So we move first to reading of minutes from the October fourth, twenty twenty one meeting. They're presented here for your approval. Are there any additions, subtractions, additions or limits to this study?
Motion being accepted.
Good motion. Is there a second? So without objection, the motion carries. And before we delve into our business for this evening, I want to introduce Lou Hayden, who has accepted the position of code enforcement officer. I know that Lou is not a stranger to most of you here. He and JT Young have already been out driving around the streets and checking on the status of some of the warnings that had been issued by Mark Harmon before he left the position. And so if you see him around in the code enforcement vehicle, be sure to wave and say that you know who he is. So Lou has been serving as the BCA representative for the city of Delphi. And he has resigned that as a result of this position involving zoning. So if you know of anyone who would be interested in filling that position of BCA, please have them get in touch with me. And so Lou, welcome. We're so glad you're here.
Thank you all. I started October the twelfth. It's my eleventh attempt. And since October twelfth, which is about four days, I got my feet back after two hours, about three, four hours out on the field, driving around. Make sure I'm seeing the right things that these want me to see and what to see today. This looked out pretty good. Just got some training today. Nineteen guys came in and they get my feet wound up on the tablet. Get some more training scheduled for Wednesday. I spent probably a couple of days trying to take up the files. I could see in there and finish the check and cover and update myself, how to use something there with the tablet. That's basically where I'm at now. Sorry about my voice. Next month, I hope, have re-planned violations, written violations I've sent out and report them to actual files.
Excellent. Lou, thank you so much. And we're really glad you're here.
Thank you.
Glad you're on the bus. Gonna be helping us get.
One other thing.
Yes.
I hope to get support from all local department heads. I'm gonna need support. I've talked to everybody, but I think I have to talk to Craig here. I'm gonna need your help there.
I'm sure you will get support from everyone in the city and hopefully a lot of support from the residents in town. Great. Thanks again. So at our last council meeting, JT was asked to schedule presentations by broadband providers who have responded to the city's request for proposals. And JT, I believe you've got Mulberry Telecom Communications here tonight. Would you like to introduce some of us?
I would. And so again, council just. At our initial meeting with the discussion at the last meeting, of course, in that interim process, we did public notice for proposals. We received three proposals. At our last council meeting, we determined that we would have one of the proposals come tonight, which is here to present. And of course, we have that scheduled for the November first meeting also. I look forward to further discussion and to formally make our recommendation to council and mayor on the next steps for this exciting process to consider with broadband services for the city. So without further delay, Mulberry is here. Greg Mash will present, introduce the team that's with him. I believe he also has a presentation that he will walk through with council and answer any questions you may have. Mr. Mash, thank you.
Thank you, JT. She is, yeah, she is part of my family. I come from a background with a lot of video production and a lot of things. So I needed something to do both. And this is what. I do get a little bit of. Okay. There you go. Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm really glad to see you again. I think this opportunity is all good for the council. I hope to be able to present and, you know, answer any questions you can have regarding what we are about to offer for the city of Delphi. So I made a formal proposal. I think, does everybody have a copy of that? Okay. JT has it.
If anyone does not, members with it for the last meeting, I do have copies.
I'm probably gonna fasten and out of it, so it's not really work for work or anything. It may help in the presentation. Thank you. I really appreciate that. So my name is Greg Mash. I am the CEO of Mulberry Telecom Communications. With me tonight is the president of our home, Jeff Stigler, right there. And then our fiber manager, his name is Brad Garrett. And so we want to present what we envision with the opportunity to serve the city of Delphi. And I want to kind of do that in and out of the proposal and with this PowerPoint. Kind of show you maybe a little bit about who we are first and then kind of where we could go with that. Mulberry, we have been around for over a hundred years. Everybody knows where Mulberry is, right? The very small town, but we do very big things out of that town. But we've been in the telecom business for over a hundred years. It's kind of ingrained in who we are. We're cooperative. We serve the rural community. We have town. So. Bounce there first. But we've been doing this for a while. We serve Mulberry. We serve Dayton, going into Lafayette, then we create. But then we serve the rural aspect, Clinton County to Pinnut County. We have partnerships to take us into Lafayette, West Lafayette, Rossville. We're in Fountain County now. We have a partnership with the RNC over there. So we are expanding quite a bit and have been doing so over the last ten years or so. And this is something that has, what the COVID world has shown us, where the need for telecommunications services is always increasing and more and more. So open it today, we call it more tomorrow and more the next day and so forth. So you're seeing all the funding and all the conversations that are happening in regards to getting broadband to the rural communities, getting everybody access, right? That's the topic in the agenda on most legislatures right now. So we are, we believe that we are in a position for the right place at the right time. Our heart is to serve our members. Being a cooperative, it becomes more about service than it does anything else. That is, like I said, that's ingrained in us. It's what we do and how we present and how we operate our business on a daily basis. Right now, we're a fiber optic company. We are converting, we'll be finished completely after a very lengthy time, period of time. But we're completing our highlight right now. But we've been sea-like, which means going out of our traditional boundaries. We've been doing that for quite some time as well. So that's where you start to see us showing up in other places like your neighbor. We'll get to that in just a minute. But we are offering gigabit services. That is something that most people are satisfied with today. We're getting ready to take our steps towards ten gig services, which is just a pipe for your internet, your data. And then we're gonna go like this and make it even bigger and bigger. So when we start talking about things, you know, with 4K video streams and video conferencing and, you know, various things like that, where the more things that we do, smartphones, those sorts of things, the more things we see that's connected online, we need a bigger pipe. And that's what our focus and our vision is for the very near future and the future beyond that. But that's really what we're talking about, is just faster speeds, symmetrical data, how we do things. So that means the same speed as you get up, you get down. So if you're, if you people like to hook servers, you know, gamers, people probably all know one. You know, a lot of times they'll have servers in their home. They're bringing all this data in and they're gonna upload it out. So those are, that's one of the biggest things that separates us from competitors is that things are symmetrical. So there's no data caps, there's no restrictions. We just provide a pipe to the home and then just say, "Have a great day and enjoy your time on the internet." But we are very reliable as well with our fiber optic services. It is, most of the time, I have to put an asterisk, but most of the time, instead of forget it. So customers are happy. They enjoy their experience online and being able to do the things that they need to do. Everybody that's working from home now, kids are doing school from home now. I mean, there's so many things that people just need to be connected. I think probably everybody knows that, but it is the way of the future. It is the way. We've kind of opened that box up, and I don't think it's a box we can push everything back into. The reality of the present is what's gonna be happening in the future. We're not going back the way things were. So and I'm going very fast, so bear with me. I preach on Sundays too, and my congregation tells me sometimes I talk too fast. So I apologize. I'm gonna do the best I can, because I got a lot of data to throw at you. And I just want to make sure I give as much to you as I can. But this is our current territory. So if you look at this map here, this is Jefferson and Frankfurt. So we have services that, you know, we're tied into Factory Road out there on twenty eighth and Frankfurt. So they have our internet services out there. We go as far south as Clint Prairie High School here. Over here, this is the interstate of sixty five and twenty eight. And then we go as far north, we're past Edna Mills and Rossville up on twenty sixth, so from this way. We have a couple of miles up into the county up there as well. We go as far, here's thirty nine going up into Rossville, sixty five and fifty two here going up to Lafayette. So when you think about Mulberry, you think about this little bitty town, but the reality is we service a very large territory. So when I said that we're a small company that offers big things, this is the small example we're talking about. So we're used to serving smaller cities, smaller towns. We're also used to serving the rural capacity as well. And we start talking about here and in Delphi now. We've laid this out, and this is, we'll talk about the proposal in just a minute. But we've laid this out in such a way, we're, in talking with JT and also Jake Adams, is trying to identify all the ties into where this is going to be. We've tried to map this out as best we can to service everything that's in this city, including some of your neighbors like Pittsburgh and so forth. Is this exact? No, but it's our best guess in the moment that we have right now. But our mission, our plan is to come in and be the provider. We want to serve everybody that we can, including those that may be harder to get to. But that's just part of our vision with this. And what I mentioned earlier, so just so everybody knows, we have been selected as a provider of choice for Flora. So we are going into the town starting in just a few months. We'll be starting our projects there and we're gonna rebuild the whole town. So we'll be getting all of our services. We're planning to put a building there at storefront, where customers can come in and pay their bills, ask questions, get questions, you know, get things answered and so forth. So this is kind of where we're heading. We're also going into Piermont as well. That's a very underserved community and they've been knocking on our door for a little while. So we've got an opportunity to go get them, so we're gonna do that. Try to get that done before we head to Flora. But it's just, again, showing our, we're okay to go where nobody else wants to go. We're looking for opportunities there to serve customers who, frankly, the bigger companies don't. There's a financial reason why they don't want to go from the rural community side. And we operate in this space. We know how to make it work in doing so. So real quickly, just, we offer various plans as a customer of ours. We try to make it as affordable as possible. And when you look at some of these things, like up to a gig, it's a hundred bucks a month, which is very, it's very aggressive in our pricing. But and stair stepping down, very affordable for people. And we are part of the emergency broadband benefit program as well. So families that qualify, they can have fifty bucks a month, you know, paid for their internet. So we're part of that dynamic world of government. And then we just offer some various things. And again, I'm sorry, I'm trying to go through this so fast, but because I'm gonna get to the proposal. But we offer various things. So like tech support, and we offer full service tech support. We provide your router. So if you get internet service with us, we'll give you the router. And that very device there allows us to support you likely like nobody has before. We can see into, not to the details of where you're going, but we can see data. We can see even to the point where if you have a wireless device, if anybody done that, you've ever been at home and you're like, "Man, things are just so slow. I can't figure this out. Doesn't make sense." And then you reboot things and magically things come back. Well, the reality is a lot of times when you have wireless devices that are connected to your router, they can be the culprit. And we can nail down, dial in so deep into the network that we can say, "Hey, you know, Brad, you've got an iPhone five that's located here. That's your problem. Just take it out, turn it off." And we've done that with customers and then magically their things go back to normal and they're astonished. But it's just part of, we've invested a lot in technical support and because that's part of the, that's what we offer. Anybody can come in here and tell you that we'll provide you with internet and, you know, services and things like that. There's a lot of competitors that are out there right now. What we feel like is a differentiating factor for us is our support. We are personal. The person you talk to on the phone, most of the time, is gonna be the person that either shows up at your house, or you're gonna know us by name or by face or so forth. We have tech support, but we have our technician team, which is the guys I'm talking about. So that's a lot of comfort for the people in Mulberry and Dayton and our rural communities that we serve now. We're all related one way or another too, which is kind of funny, but I'm kidding. Bad Indiana joke. We offer telephone services. Our plan is to offer phone and internet. We are in the TV business right now, so if you happen to get on our website and you see television services being offered, we are actually pausing that business for a little while. If you have television services, you've probably seen your cable bills like this for quite some time, and that's not stopping until something blows up, frankly. So we are not planning to offer television services, but we will provide pathways to the internet that will offer streaming services. You don't have to worry about buffering. You don't have to worry about bandwidth and so forth. But we'll offer phone services, business services as well. Another big part of this, I know there's a lot of big businesses right here in town where we would offer, you know, advanced services as well. Fiber, you know, dark fiber, bit circuits, we'll offer PBX systems and so forth. And then we also offer video production. If you've ever seen us, maybe even at Delphi or getting Delphi on the road. If you ever watched a streaming of a game, we've been here a few times. We've caught you guys on the road a few times, but the IC Sports Network is part of what we are as well. And we do a lot of sports streaming and television broadcasts. So that's just something that, from the community aspect, which we are very ingrained in the communities that we serve, would be a part, it would be a benefit working with us. We already sort of, you know, talking with the Carols. Delphi would be another one. We serve Clint Prairie. We're at Rossville a lot. We're at Frankfurt a lot and so forth. So just another benefit to talk about working with us. So let me bail on that for a minute and then talk about the proposal. Questions yet? Yes, sir?
Question, but like downtime, I hope we're.
Downtime? We, so I can't answer that a hundred percent right now. I didn't tell you that I have, I've been CEO for two months. I've been with the company twenty one years. I just replaced the guy that I get to call Dad again. He was the CEO for forty, or CEO for twenty seven years with the company forty five years. So I've grown up inside running around the phone company. There is a record weight file every year that documents that. We're, I mean, ninety nine plus percent, we are good to go. Is there ever a rare occurrence that something happens? Brad, when's the last time we've had anything that's been absolutely catastrophic? Can you remember? Brad's been with the company fifteen, sixteen years.
I can't think of the last time we've been about a hard out as far as internet goes.
Yeah.
TV services is a different beast.
Yeah, yeah. We don't wanna talk about TV. It's a salt balloon kind of thing, but.
Since we don't house it, but.
Yeah, there's a lot of things we can't control. The internet, there's a lot of things we control, which is where we do our best for.
Yeah, I can't remember the last time we had a hard out.
Yeah. I really can't. I'm not trying to just look good in front of everybody either. Okay, so as I mentioned, I'd like to talk about the proposal just for a few minutes and then I'll let you hear about the rest of your night. But we are, we're planning to build a building in Flora. I've been working on that project right now. We're getting ready to close the land. We'll begin this month. We'll have a building out there on seventy five by the John Deere dealership, Clark Street and seventy five. And that would be the main hub, we'll say, of what we're doing in Carroll County. Whether you guys choose to work with us or not, that's happening. We're gonna service, and we're gonna keep coming forward. We've applied for some of the funding that's now available to help, you know, help take care of that rural community, which is, like I said, that's what we do best. But that is where we would house for customer relations and so forth. From a ops perspective, we would want to put something in the city and maybe even a tunnel where we'd have like what we call a central office of CEO, where it would be a place where everything kind of comes together and we operate for the daily services out there. We would provide separate redundant paths coming up into the city. So we would come up south from Piermont, we'd come over from Flora, and then we would have a ring. So to your point, if there's a fiber cut somewhere that's the main, we would have a redundant path where everything flows to the other side and you wouldn't even notice. That's part of our infrastructure. It's built that way and how we've designed everything locally for our highlight. So it resolves issues like that. But we really don't have too often where the main gets cut. I can think of maybe once or twice.
Thanks a lot.
That's what Brad asked for later in ninety seven. But that's the whole point. We provide redundancy, so you don't, as a customer, you don't even have to worry about this thing. We're planning on providing residential and comfort customers. We talked about that a little bit. We would like to propose as well, is that on that map, since we're coming from the south, is this would be the idea, is to come here upward. It's just the way we would build the plant out. So it would be done in phases. It would be the simplest but the quickest too, because that would be the idea. If you ask anybody if they want fiber that doesn't have fiber, they'll say they want it yesterday. So, you know, being able to accommodate that, this would be the quickest way for us to come through. We also have the ability, one of the benefits to our company as well, is we're flexible. If things happen, we course correct pretty quickly. And if you need something more, we can do that as well. We were planning to build this out, so we have the ability to expand. So if you guys choose to work with us, so like you say, you know, right here, we want to develop something or up here, we want to develop something, those are easy questions or things for us to resolve and how we build out. We would build out with a future in mind. And if there's things, if you decide to work with us and you already know in advance, those are the things we want to talk about right off the top, you know, even if it's a possibility, because it's a whole lot cheaper to do it at the front than it is later in the process. Let's see, what else? How would we do it? This is a good question. So we've been warned about you all. What's in the ground up here? So there's a potential of dealing with some rocks and some heavy things in the ground. So we've proposed, and it's why our number is a little bigger, but we propose to do this with a lot of warning, directional warning in the ground and instead of just a plow or anything like that. And disclaimer too, we're a telecom company. That's why you're not gonna hear us talk about hanging on poles a lot. We're gonna argue that the best place to put anything is in the ground. We've had a lot of experience with dealing with that. So that's just the way we would like to do it. It's not to say that we wouldn't or can't, but we would prefer, that's our first option, just put things in the ground. But we would direction of war. So our main lines going through the city, our laterals come out to kind of, you know, tier that down to get to the drop site at home at that point. Then we may plow, we may pour depending on each customer we need at that point. But we offer a system as well that is called Checkpoint. So that allows, you actually even have, because we have this, you see it's in the gray. It's called a layer, area of interest for us. We actually have people already contacting us saying, "We'd like to have your services." And those are the mechanisms that we use. This entire back office allows us to communicate with customers. You hear what they need, what they want, are they interested, what kind of services do you want? Will you allow us to plow on your territory or your home? Are there any things that we have to, you might love dolphins, these gas lines, those type of things. So it's this entire system that we use. It's a step-by-step process, very open to the customer, very transparent. And there's a lot of communication that goes on between the two. So that's just something we already have in place that we want to use again here. Then the installation part, once all the fiber is to the home, at the point of installation, we physically come to the home. We don't hand you a box and say, "Good luck." We actually show up at the house and we will install everything for you, get you all up for it and make sure you're happy, high five you on the way out the door and move on from there. But we, again, we enjoy customer service. We enjoy our time with the customer and building relationships. That's what our company is. And then once it's installed, the support is what I talked about earlier. That's where we really thrive. We can help people. We have, it's so funny, we have a list of some of the strangest things that people call us for. You know, they call our tech support line and ask some fun things, but it's because they're used to us answering their questions. We've had people call up and say, "My printer's not working. Help me." We don't do printers. We're telecom guys, but we'll help the customer because that's what they need. We've had people asking like, "Why is my, why is my clock flashing?" You know, like things, "How do I set?" You know, like very, it's just funny. It's just funny. But anyway, timeline. Okay, so we can talk about the cost of timeline now. So we are going to Flora, right? So we are starting that process Q one of twenty twenty two. We anticipate that to go until Q one of twenty twenty three. Everything goes well. Maybe it's a little shorter. We don't know, but that's our expectation. So unless there is something dramatic that happens, we can't tell you that we'll be here tomorrow or even next year. What we can tell you is we would be here as soon as Flora wraps up. And Flora's being done in stages as well, so our mainline crews are gonna be coming through. Our drop crews are gonna be coming through. Our installers are gonna be coming through. It's a tiered process, but once the mainline guys are done, they're gonna be heading to the next. So if it's a year process and they're done in nine months, they will be going to the next step wherever we're going, whether it's here or one of our other plants as well. So this is just how we see it and we've already committed to them. But hopefully, you know, if you guys decide to work with us, it gives you a chance to kind of see how it's gonna be, what it's gonna look like. Maybe you have relatives or family or friends that are over there that you can even ask, "What's the service like? How's it been?" And it might hopefully secure your feelings towards us as well. We did ask for, in conversations, we had met with Mayor Worthing and with Jake Adams. And there was a level of interest, it sounded like, for the council to be using funds that Delphi already had from the, I think it's the Art, right, American Rescue Program. But we would request that. This is gonna be a very expensive project, but we would like to know that the community is invested too. We're not asking, I mean, that's, if you notice what our estimate is, that's right. We're not conflating anything. To do what we do, it's an expensive endeavor, but it's the right way to do it. And that's how we view the business, to do it right the first time. It's okay to invest early to do it right. But we would ask for that to be a part of this. And then we would like to request is the support, you know, to do something in this endeavor. It will cost a lot of money, but it's something that I, we see it as a partnership, teamwork, working together. If it's marketing, if it's conversations, if it's, you know, bill inserts from utilities, if it's signage, whatever it is, it's just if we would like to do something, partnership together, whatever that is, we'd just like to have a blessing of the council and of the city to do those things together. So it's kind of brain-coordinated and look at what we're doing because it's a good thing. So again, I apologize. This has been a fast, fast, but probably felt like the eternity of me talking. But I'd be happy to answer the questions. This is, I would say in closing though, is we're really excited about coming to Carroll County. Carroll County. Uh, this is, this is an opportunity for us to expand our footprint, but it's not for dollars and cents. I mean, it's to expand our footprint because we're passionate about broadband in, in the smaller communities. That's just who, who we are and what we do, we do so every day. Uh, we, we enjoy being able to celebrate with the customer when everything is working well, when they're trying to do their job online. We celebrate with the customer when they got their kids, and they're, they're happy because they don't have to travel to the school to get wireless capabilities in the parking lot. All these things are just steps forward, and we don't see them changing. We just see it growing, growing. The needs continue to grow. So being able to get out in front of it as best we can, uh, but even in the rural community where we're kind of starved in that way, um, it's an opportunity for everybody to benefit from something like this. So now, if you have any questions, yes, sir?
Counsel first, please.
Okay.
Counsel, if you have questions, two more minutes. Questions in the public, please, uh, if you can.
I enjoy your voice because I'm almost deaf and I can hear it, and it had a great presentation. You mentioned something beyond your control is the thing that we're having in Los Angeles, Long Beach, Savannah, and Charlotte with the importance of getting equipment and wire to your, to this city if they so decide. Is that gonna be an issue for you? Because there's a lot, a lot of it that is, and for lack of better terms, overstays, which is out of your control, right?
Yes, great question. Uh, I've got to have brought that up, actually. So, uh, the answer is, the sooner that we know, the better everyone's gonna be, right? We, we have actually already started ordering things for Flora that's, uh, body mass before we actually put it in the ground. So, uh, and we've got commitments from our providers that we, we should be fine as far as that goes. But you're, you're exactly right, this is, everybody, I mean, with all the money that the government's pumping into the, to the economy in regards to rural broadband, there's, everybody and their brother is looking for fiber, interducts, uh, panels, all the, all the things. So, um, we, we've got a, a, a large, um, pool to look, to, vendors to look from, uh, but yeah, we, we've already started that process, uh, and it's just part of what we're already doing, so. Good question, though. But I, I, I would, I mean, with, with this kind of timeline, uh, if, if we know in a reasonable amount of time, like, I don't know when you, we haven't talked about decisions anymore, maybe it sounds like after November's meeting, maybe, but the sooner that, for any of us, whoever you choose, the sooner you can tell that this is the direction we're going, the better off it's gonna be.
Could I get your name, please?
I'm sorry, Mary Kay.
Your name, please?
Uh, Tony Brooks.
And are you a Delphi resident?
Yes, I am. And I want to be heard over some other points later on before you guys telegraph anything, so.
I do have a question. Um, what kind of payment structure would be the, uh, get, do we bring down the payment? Is, is payment done at the end, at the beginning?
That, that would be negotiable. Um, I mean, with a project this size, we're investing a lot anyways, so it's, it's a very small portion of the overall budget. Uh, I, I would suggest for consideration would be half at the beginning and half at the end, and just do it that way. But that's, that's completely negotiable.
Mary Kay, by May. On the, could you just go through quickly, uh, under project timeline and costs, and just kind of explain that, you know, bottom line, where it speaks of the estimated overall job cost, that amount, but then also, you know, references the on.
Yes, thank you. Yes, absolutely. Um, and I apologize, the high points, the low points, which ones do I hit? Uh, so, yes, great question. So we're estimating six and a half million dollar project to go start to finish here. So, uh, that's broken up with our materials, uh, we have a lot in, uh, of course, to go through the entire city of an overbuild, you've got fiber rock cables, you've got panels, you've got interducts, you've got NSTs, which is, uh, splice points, we'll say, for easy understanding. Uh, we've got Mids, uh, which are the boxes on the side of your house, uh, or inside the house is what we like to do. Um, we've got those motor, or the gateways that I showed you earlier. So there's a lot of costs, uh, CapEx costs from start to finish, we've got all the labor to do it. Um, so, then we've got the networking equipment, uh, so to provide the, uh, amount of payment that you guys need and what would go into that CO, uh, that's gonna be part of that overall cost, uh, to supply. So, um, there's all of that part now. The sixty-five percent is our estimated take rate, um, so that's what we are building our entire blueprint on. Um, so that would be sixty-five percent of residential customers. Uh, the actual business customer's a little less than that, um, so that would be, if you're taking, we, we estimated this base with a, a Mir and Mulberry and they, our own customers, so if we got X, X percent is in our classic package, X percent is in our prime package, and so forth. Um, sorry, that's the video service. The starter, the gamer, our internet packages, uh, I came out of the video world, by the way. Um, so, uh, but that, that's how we were basing that on. So just kind of a, a Nielsen rating kind of thing, right? We're, I did video again, sorry. Um, but that kind of idea, you take a little snapshot and you kind of hear that, you know, for the rest of the way. But that's what we're basing it on. Uh, we're, we're over sixty-five percent at home, but that's just, we're gonna, we'd love to be more than that here, but that's just how, we're trying to average this out to try to get that five-year payoff is what we're looking at. Does that, does that help?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Have any answer, any offline, if you guys have further to add?
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, I really appreciate the timing opportunity. Uh, if any of the council has questions after this, um, JT has my email, feel free to reach out. Have any answer, any questions you have?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes?
So the next order of current business is the budget ordinance for twenty twenty-one, uh, four, that's twenty twenty-one dash twelve, twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, and twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, uh, to adopt the budget salary and wages for twenty twenty-two. Um, since Form Four was not presented as ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve at the October fourth meeting, we need to review that ordinance again, and that would be considered the first reading, is that correct?
Yes, right, yes.
Okay. So what we reviewed was Form Three, Form Four is the actual budget, uh, ordinance, uh, that was included in the package. Is there a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve on first reading?
Motion to pass the first reading.
For a second?
Madam Mary Kay?
Can I be heard?
No, sir, not yet.
Okay, on this, uh, on your proposal, your budgets and everything, I cannot be heard.
We had a public hearing at the last meeting, sir.
I'm sorry, it wasn't in town last week, and, and it's just, it's a hot, are you waving the, the third reading, then?
We're on our first reading, sir.
Pardon me?
We are on the first reading of that ordinance.
Okay, so you go on with the third reading.
It's the first reading on the first ordinance on this part first, we have the, the other parts for the actual budget itself, we weren't having a public hearing for it.
Okay, no, I would just like to be heard on a very specific wage and salary increases, the pay amounts.
We are not at that point, sir, this is the budget, this is the obligation.
I, I just need some justification on those amounts.
Sir, we are not at that point in the, the discussion.
So you're saying I can't be heard?
Is there any discussion on the budget ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve?
Okay.
We are, we are touching, talking about the budget, we are not on the salary and wage ordinances yet.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to be heard on that point as I could.
So is there any discussion on twenty twenty-one dash one? There are none, all those in favor, so you can go by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I ask that council consider suspending rules to pass ordinance of, ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve on second and third reading this evening. Proceed that vote must be unanimous, is there a motion?
I motion, sir.
Is there a second? What's that? Take sandies this time. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve on second reading?
I motion, I'll say it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash twelve on third and final reading?
I motion, sir.
Second?
Second one.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, the salary ordinance for twenty twenty-two with corrections other than the first reading. Is there a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen on second reading?
I motion, sir.
Any discussion? There, did we read it? It's up to you. Do you wish to speak on a salary ordinance?
I'm sorry, you have to, somebody with a deep voice.
Would you like to speak on this topic?
Yes.
Okay.
I, um...
State your name again, please.
Uh, first off, I was out of town, and I apologize.
Mr., oh, Mr. Brooks, can you speak, uh, state your name again?
Uh, Tony Brooks.
Thank you.
I live on Summit Street here in Delphi. Um, I apologize for me not being here, it was out of my control. Um, I, I, I read the newspaper quite often, and, and I was, and dismayed when I heard that no citizens of this town spoke out on the budget request, none, I'm here to do so.
There's a question, please.
I did some research in the, your office, your colleagues throughout the state, um, range anywhere's to the, in the high one hundreds to the low sixties. I called my cousin in Monticello to see how her salary was, and, and your increase would be above hers. The population of her town is double the size of Delphi. She has had an upward growth, um, and, and again, um, I got ahold of the people in Frankfurt, and this is lower than yours proposed. I talked to my friend Joe Hogstead in Indianapolis, and his is at ninety-five thousand dollars. I've had the pleasure of working with him over the last several years prior to my retirement. So I, I think these people, um, are people who'd be honest with me and upfront. I also read in the paper, and if I'm not correct, I'm sure this will correct me, and I hope she would, that, uh, the salary people or the people on downline, the actual people that do the work, that are out on our streets that we see more often than not, uh, just wanna have a hard time getting a four percent increase. I, um, I'm getting an increase of my salary by, uh, six percent, whereas the cost of labeling is like five point four, so I'm at six, ten point percent increase.
You have one more minute, please, one more minute.
Pardon me?
One more minute.
One more minute? Um, I think the council really, really needs to take a hard look before this is, and question the monies and how they're being spent. And that's all I have on that top, that particular topic.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Yep.
Any other discussion from the council? All in favor of passing ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirteen, uh, the salary ordinance, um, on, um, second reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, the wages, uh, ordinance for twenty twenty-two with directions similar to that first reading. Is there a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fourteen on second reading? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I ask that council consider suspending the rules to pass ordinances twenty twenty-one dash thirteen and twenty twenty-one dash fourteen on third and final reading this evening. To proceed, that vote must be unanimous, is there a motion on second?
Motion, sir. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there a... You, you do, you're fine. Is there a motion, uh, to pass twenty twenty-one dash thirteen on third and final reading? Will you be second? All, like, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash fourteen on third and final reading?
Motion for a reading.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So, under new business, are two petitions to vacate alleys in the area of development and polygons and parcs. And, and your packet was a map of those, and, are you Mr. Meemeyer?
Yes.
And you have Bill Meemeyer, who represents, uh, Honor LLC, uh, with their petition. Uh, so first would be petition number one, uh, which is...
So the satisfied requirement, and, I apologize, it's kind of hard to differentiate between the two petitions because they are so similar. Um, and as Mayor said, and thank you, Mayor, the council, while we have presented these two petitions this evening, we have filed two petitions, and they are very similar because both involve six parcels. Uh, we've listed the parcel numbers on each of the respective petitions. I'll start with petition one, which I think is a little bit easier to differentiate because I can say that it is between Rose Street and Franklin Street and west of Annapolis Street. And if, if you look at the diagram, it is the property that the two unused alleys form an X. So I'm, that's the first petition that I'm talking about. I can share this evening that this particular site is the proposed site for a future family dollar store. So that will be the use. The problem is, as currently played out, those alleys dissect the building. Fortunately for us, they are unused alleys, so they don't currently serve a purpose for end use. There's no gravel, there's no asphalt, there's no indication that there are alleys until you do a survey, and then they pop off. And then we, like, we're building on the grid, and see that we certainly need to present a request to vacate the two unused alleys. So regarding the first petition, we would request the vacating of those two alleys, and legal discretion for the alleys is presented in the petition. I'm happy to answer any questions that we may have, but I think this one may be pretty straightforward.
So this would be the culprits?
Yes.
And say the law.